Good evening, everyone. I'm Joe Hurd from the Blair County Chamber. I would like to welcome everyone to tonight's Candidates Forum. This event is hosted by the Public Policy Committee of the Chamber and is co-sponsored by the Blair County Democratic Committee and the Blair County Republican Committee. Tonight's forum is being broadcast on tape delay by Lightner Communications on radio station WR TA and will be shown also on Altuna Public Access either late tomorrow or Thursday. If you want to access it there, go to the city's website at altunap.gov, click on the public access icon, and go to channel 14. It will also be available on the Blair County Chamber's YouTube channel later this week. I'd also encourage you to take one of the programs from tonight's event. We have some people back there who can give them to you if you haven't already secured one. It provides some insight into the candidates' own words on why they feel they should be one of your county's next county commissioners. At this time, it's my pleasure to introduce Lisa Han, the Chair of the Chamber's Public Policy Committee, who will introduce the candidates and the moderators and explain the guidelines for the forum. Lisa?
Thank you, Joe. I welcome you all here this evening and welcome our candidates. In alphabetical order, we have Dave Kessling, Laura Burke, I'm sorry, Scott Barger, Laura Burke, Dave Kessling, I didn't adjust my glasses, Manny Nichols, and Carol Taylor, and Amy Webster. Their affiliation is on their name tag. And with us this evening, we also have our moderators, Donna Gordy and Steve Hauser. And I thank them all for coming and for assisting us with this. We do have our two moderators who will be alternating asking questions of the candidates. All the candidates will have the opportunity to answer each question. Each candidate will be given two minutes to respond and will be given a 30-second warning. It'll look like this, folks, with the yellow paddle. The red paddle will indicate that you must stop. At the end of the question-and-answer period, each candidate will be given two minutes each for a closing statement. Any questions? Okay, then we can begin.
All right, and just so you know, if you need restrooms while we're here, the men's is at the top of this aisle and the ladies is at the top of that aisle. So, good evening. I'm former Blair County Commissioner Donna Gordy, and our other moderator is former Bedford County Commissioner Steve Hauser. So, we're trying to keep this with experience and party representation. I have the first question, and for this one, we're going to start and go down in alphabetical order. So, Scott Barger first. What have you done to research the job of county commissioner? And for those of you that are incumbents, what did you do to educate yourself prior to running for the first time? So, Scott, what have you done to educate yourself?
Everything I can. I have talked to as many people who will talk to me. In fact, I've talked to Donna, and I ask the same questions. You know, what are the biggest struggles that we're facing as a county? And what do you think county government could do to fix those problems? I've been in learning mode for the last six months. In fact, I did something that one of the commissioners told me was a little bit weird. I printed out a budget, and I carry it around with me like my second Bible. But don't tell my mother I call it that, because she would scold me. But I've been learning and researching and studying and asking and talking to people as much as possible, because I don't feel that I can give an honest answer without adequate information. You know, you're just giving out, you're dishing out political platitudes if you don't know the details of the problems we're facing. And let me tell you what, win, lose, or draw, this will be the most educated I've ever been as a voter going into this municipal election, because I really do think that in the last six months, I've learned a lot about the issues facing Blair County. And the only way you can really do that is to ask, to research. I'm going to meetings, commissioners' meetings, which are exciting, super exciting, and learning and asking questions. My father used to tell me, "Don't be afraid to ask stupid questions, just only ask them once." And so, I just meet people and ask them, teach me something. What's your advice? What would you do? What could you do better? What could I do better? I think really that's the approach I've taken, and it's served me well so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura, what did you do the first time you ran for commissioner to educate yourself?
I've made this joke before, but the first thing you have to do when you're running for office in Blair County is, has talked to Donna Gordy. So, I did. I talked to Donna, and then I had the benefit of not working during the day when I was running. So, I went to every single public meeting that I could attend that fit into my schedule. And by doing that, you really see the flow of the work. We do, you know, working session to hear about the issues, ask questions, and then business sessions to vote. So, without really seeing that cycle and being there regularly, you don't really appreciate how things move through the system with us. So, I do encourage all the candidates to make an effort to come to those public meetings, and they're now being tape-recorded for public access. So, that's a nice benefit for the candidates running this year. And then, most importantly, I think, and the most helpful thing for me, was attending budget meetings. So, in the fall, when we start doing the public budget meetings, the commissioners in 2019 really had public meetings that were collaborative with all three commissioners there, going in detail into each department and their budgeting needs and the decisions that were being made. And that was tremendously helpful, not only in understanding the budget, since that is such a big part of what we do, but in understanding the activities of each department, why they needed those expenditures, and what some of the things they were doing were, which I wouldn't have known just from going to the regular public meetings. But one thing I will say is that there is a lot more to this job. I thought I was well-prepared. You probably only see maybe 10% to 15% of what the commissioners do by seeing them in public events, from, you know, just the day-to-day management liaison meetings, all of the HR aspects that are not, they're not public, and they're not public for good reasons. But that really makes up the bulk of our time, and it's not something you really can prepare for.
Thank you. Dave Kessling, what have you done to educate yourself?
I've been out in the public for the last eight months. I've tried to hit every corner of this county that I possibly can, talking to everybody who will talk to me. I'm trying to understand the issues that occur in Tyrone and Williamsburg, as well as Hollidaysburg, Altuna, and East Freedom, places like that. I am retired from the state system, so I'm well-aware of the government. I've worked in the state and retired for 24 years. I've been a department head in three different counties. So, I'm also aware of the budget, how to prepare a budget, how to defend a budget. I've done that with commissioners. In preparation for this, I've also talked to former commissioners that are friends of mine to ask them what their job duties is, what it entails, what are the pitfalls, what are the things that occur that we don't see publicly that you see, and I don't see, because I've never been in this position before? What are the challenges? Things like that. So, I still think it's, you need to be out in the public. I think as a commissioner, when you're in office, I know there's a lot to do. I know it's a hard job, but that does not give you an excuse not to be still out in the public. I think that to govern properly, you need to know what the issues are from the people and hear it from them themselves. So, that's what I've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Manny Nichols, what have you done?
I, sort of the same as Dave said. I spent almost two years circling Blair County, talking to people, talking to leaders, law enforcement, firefighters. And I've done everything I could to get the feel for what these people are up against. I believe, being a sitting school board director overseeing a budget that's actually larger than Blair County, and we got a lot more moving parts in Blair County, and I think it's prepared me pretty much of what I'm going to face as a commissioner. We also got the personnel problems, HR, IT, teachers' negotiations. We got multiple contracts. We even have a contract for confidential secretaries. That's how in-depth the school district is. So, I believe that prepared me for it, and also being a business owner of 35 years, and I had at one time 40 employees working for me. So, I know the responsibilities of keeping employees working. And I'd also like to mention, I probably, of all the people here, I worked at departments for Blair County the longest. I've been working with EMA and the 9/11 Dispatch Center for three decades when I started business. I worked with the Sheriff's Department way back when Larry Fields was working. I worked with the Coroner's Office. You name it, I've worked with almost every department. I would say four or five. And like I said, it's been decades. So, I know this county pretty darn well.
Thank you. Carol Taylor, what have you been doing to educate yourself?
I think my education started way back in 2018, when I first got involved in politics and was canvassing and knocking on doors here in Blair County and asking people, what were the issues most important to them? And actually, in 2019, I was canvasser of the year because I knocked more doors than anybody else, talking to folks. And I think that's an important thing. I have been interested and invested in this community before that even, but certainly in paying attention to the needs of Blair County since 2018. I ran for State Senate, as you know, last year, and also that involved in my focus on Blair County, where I felt honestly the most comfortable in knowing you folks. Beyond that, I've known Laura Burke and Donna Gordy for a long time, and I've asked a lot of questions over the years, because I care about what happens in this community. And they've always given me answers, succinct, honest, direct answers about what are the important things that are happening. Beyond that, I do believe in some literature education. So, I did go and take a look on the website, look at all the different areas that the commissioners oversee, which is quite a lot, and have gone to commissioners' meetings and sat there and listened, took time off from work, left work, went back to work, but went to the meetings. I've gone to city council meetings to listen to what's going on in Altuna. What are the important issues? So, it's an ongoing process of involvement, but mostly, my involvement has been mostly one-to-one on those doors, talking to folks, finding out what's important to them. Because honestly, the commissioner touches and deals with everything that deals with the county, and it's a lot. It's all the services that the county provides. It's all the employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy, before you ran the first time, what did you do to educate yourself?
Well, I have been a part of this community for most of my, most of my life, actually. So, after law school, when I came back here, I had no intention of getting involved in politics, but I was an attorney, so I was working with a lot of folks and hearing troubles and struggles and trying to help them. After that, at some point, I decided to run for Borough Council in Hollidaysburg. And so, I got the experience not only from my own office, where I was operating things, I was the managing partner, so I dealt with all of the administrative issues, but I then transferred that knowledge to my time on Borough Council. Borough Council is a little different than this, but it gave me some experience and some insight. When I decided to run for commissioner last time, then I did several things. First of all, you're going to laugh, but this is an attorney answer. I read the county code, because that is what tells us what we can and cannot do and what we have to do. So, I read that, because I thought that would be very important to know. I visited the offices in the courthouse, although having been an attorney for so many years, I knew a lot of the folks that worked in them, and I had the opportunity to just delve in a little bit more with what they did. I did attend some of the meetings. The budget meetings were very, very interesting and very different from what we did in Borough Council, but it was very instructive. But the best thing that I did was going out, talking to folks, going door-to-door. I really enjoyed that. I got to know a lot of people and hear their concerns, and kept that in my mind, so that I could help deal with those issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to start at this end of the table and work our way back this time. So, can everybody hear me? Now? Now, can you hear me? Okay. All right, we're going to start on this end and work our way back this time with Commissioner Webster. The question is, Amy, as a county commissioner, what is your top priority for Blair County, and how will you address it?
Thank you. My top priority, my top concern, is that we need more jobs. We need jobs to keep people here, and we need jobs to bring people here. We have, we have many, many wonderful companies that have been here for years and years, and we support them in our, in our efforts as commissioners. But we also need to encourage new businesses to join us. Part of what will bring that in is housing, so that if there are jobs here, then people need places to live. So, housing is another big issue that's a part of the whole jobs issue. All of America is suffering with this current economy, and jobs and businesses are going by the wayside. So, we have to get creative. We have a lot of wonderful things here in Blair County that will draw people here, and we need to emphasize those things and have the opportunity to show them what we are like here, invite them in, and make sure that we've got lots of jobs and lots of houses for folks. Part of how I would encourage people is some of the things that we've been working on, fixing infrastructure here, working on housing issues, getting rid of blight, and infrastructure issues with the roads and bridges, trying to eliminate the structurally deficient ones. We've, we've made quite a bit of progress in the last three and a half years. So, those are the things I would, I would want to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol, what is your top priority for Blair County, and how will you address it?
Well, the overall goal is, much like Amy had stated, is to have a place where people want to stay and live, and people will actually move here, so economic expansion and development. However, I see the impediment to that as something a little different. Altuna, just for example, within Blair County, has less than a national average in crime, but has much more in terms of violent crime. I attribute that largely to the problem that we are dealing with, that commissioners will be dealing with, which is our substance abuse and addiction problem in this area. There is a fortune in opioid settlement money that is coming into the county that we are going to have to see is used properly to properly address the problem. And everything seems to feed into that. It is the thing that's holding us back. Our crime is a deterrent to people moving here. It affects us economically, because there's lost jobs, lost productivity. It affects our families. It affects children and youth with the demands in terms of children, the neglected or abused, domestic violence, the strain on our police force, and our EMS services. That's why I see it as one of the most important jobs of the commissioner, to have to deal with, to focus on, and to do our best to make this a very good place to live. And I do think that that is probably going to be one of the biggest priorities in the next few years for the commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Manny, what is your top priority for Blair County, and how will you address it?
I'm probably going to be one of the guys up here at the commissioners that, I'll be a 360. I think we got to fix Blair County's house first. When I, I've been talking to all the different departments. We have parole officers leaving. We have deputies that's getting trained by us, high turnover, taking other jobs. We got a coroner's office that's, that's a total disaster. Every single department I look at is a mess, and I've never seen anything like it. It's actually embarrassing that we're paying these kind of wages to county workers. And I can give you an example, and I would just love for the media to follow us around, because I deal a lot with the coroner's office. We clean trauma scenes up, deadly bacteria, virus. They're paying people $10 an hour to go in with a dust mask. And do you realize to go in and clean a trauma scene up, it takes about $4,000 worth of equipment? And I'll tell you what, if I become commissioner, it won't happen. Number one priority are your employees. When morale is low, when you have turnover, 6% to 8% of that is your budget, cuts into your budget. That is how big of a problem that is. I, I did it at the school district. We are now the number one paid employees in the area, and I saved the taxpayers $1.2 million.
Thank you. Dave, what is your top priority for Blair County, and how will you address it?
Well, unfortunately, I can't tell you there's a top priority, because our county is in that bad a shape. We have a prison that's 154 years old that we are now faced to do something with. We have a pension plan that's $60 million in debt that we need to do something with. We need a plan. We need the communication. We need cooperation with municipalities, boroughs. We need communication and cooperation with our, the folks that work with us, our department heads in the county budget. And I believe that we need to start planning for these, these things. It's my opinion, this is not a dig or a shot at any of the commissioners up here. I'm grateful that they're here, and I'm grateful for stepping up and being the commissioners the past three years. However, I think, in my opinion, we manage by crisis. We didn't wake up one day and find that our prison's 154 years old, folks. Two years after the Civil War, the original prison was built, and we didn't put $20 aside to deal with that. And now, we're in a position where we have to deal with it. We have to do something. The same with our budget. $60 million in debt. We're the most underfunded pension plan in this state. We didn't plan. Why? I don't understand that. So, part of my platform is to come up with a plan to deal with these things. I've set a 10-year plan, and that's what I mean. I think that we start a plan, we identify what these issues are, we tell the people in the community what those issues are, we talk about these issues, and then we start planning to how we're going to address them over the year, so that we're not faced with, when we have these big issues like this, it comes out of the taxpayers' pockets. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura, what is your top priority for Blair County, and how will you address it?
So, I think there are, you know, two major roles of the commissioners. One is internal management of the county itself as it runs as an entity, and the other is leading in the community. So, it's both leadership and management. And I think that what I have seen over the last term is, we have a lot of people doing a lot of good work, who care deeply about this community, but there's a lack of communication, and there's a lack of collaboration. So, we see it, I think, with the trail system. We have a lot of cooks in the kitchen, all kind of going in different directions. That's an area where some communication and some planning could really make a big difference to our economy and the community. Social services, issues related to mental health and the prisons, in the prison, another area where there are a lot of organizations doing good work. Maybe if we had some communication and worked together, we could put that into, like, what is the optimum solution to help the most people in our community? So, I think one priority is improving communication, both internally in the county and with the community, and among community leaders and stakeholders, the other municipalities, would be a big improvement. But I think the issue, the priority, and the thing that we need to solve is this, this loss of sense of community. And are we, all these individual municipalities, are we all these individual school districts, or are we one county that can work together to make this a good place to live, where people want to come, where businesses want to open shop?
Thank you. Scott, what is your priority, top priority for Blair County, and how will you address it?
I think Blair County has, to put it mildly, something like a leaky roof, or maybe a couple of leaky roofs, namely, the unfunded pension and a prison that is in desperate need of attention. The best I can tell, from looking at the budget and talking to people who are smarter than me and more experienced than me, to solve those problems well, and to solve them so that we don't have to keep solving them again, like Dave said, if we don't, if we don't do it well now, it'll prevent us from running government well 20 years from now. If we don't want to keep underpaying our people, we have to solve these problems first, and we have to do it now, and it's going to take 20 or 30 years. That's how long it's going to take. And the amount of money we're going to have to come up with per year is something in the neighborhood of $7 to $10 million per year to address those two problems, so that our great kids and our grandkids aren't stuck with the same problem that we are. So, I agree with Dave. We need a plan. We need to look forward. Those are the two biggest things. It's not that these other things aren't important. Of course, it's important. Of course, it would be nice to pay, pay people the best possible wage, but it's irresponsible to start there. That is not the biggest problem. That, we start there, and we don't address these other issues, we're going to reneg on our promises to pay people well not five years from now. We have to start with these problems. We have to start by cutting expenses. Last possible, last possible step in that process, to me, or my, my last option would be to go to taxpayers and ask them, "Hey, you need to chip in some more money, but you know something?" I doubt that's avoidable. I don't think it's avoidable. We're going to have to go to taxpayers to have them pay more, but you can't do that with a clear conscience, I don't think, until you first do the hard work as a commissioner, of making as much room in the budgets you can to tackle these two problems, the prison and the pension. Thank you.
Thank you. Our third question, we're going to start with Laura Burke and work back down towards the left again. And since we're the Chamber of Commerce sponsoring this event or holding the event, how do you plan to work with the Blair County business community?
That's a great question. So, one way is that the county is a member of the chamber. Several of us sit on committees or have attended committee meetings, keeping, keeping those lines of communication open and showing up to events. I will say that during COVID, it was difficult when, when in-person events weren't happening. So, I think we kind of, as a, as a board in this term, lost some time there. And, and I honestly think during COVID, we just, we all, I think there were relationships that, you know, weren't able to be created, or we lost because of just not being able to be together in person. But I think that's one thing, is being active in the community, as someone else said, is you can't just disappear until the next election year. So, you know, I think it's important that we are active and out and communicating with businesses and business owners, certainly being responsive when we get questions, and just generally communicating better. Thank you.
Dave Kessling?
Again, I'll go back to communication and cooperation. As a commissioner, I believe that we're here to support the county, so we have to have open lines of communication with municipalities. As a commissioner, I'm not going to be telling municipalities what they need to do, or I'm not going to be planning for them. What I want from them is to hear from them, and they need to tell us what they want, and it's up for us to, to support that. Since Blair County is a big county, since I have not been in office before, I would like to, if I would be elected, I would like to initiate a committee for four to six months to get people in, business people, successful business people, people who just started businesses, people from the farming and agriculture community. We need to sit down so that we have a better understanding of what the issues and the problems are. If we don't understand them, if we are the government and we are taxed with putting the money where, where it needs to go, we need to understand from the people, the municipalities, the boroughs, what their issues, concerns are, and then that way, we would be able to help them. That's what I would do. Thank you.
Thank you. Manny Nichols?
I think you start with opening up a line of communications with small business owners. I actually have 103 businesses right now supporting my campaign, and I'm also a business owner of four different ones, 35 years now, in Blair County. You got to make it easier for businesses to set up shop in Blair County. I got locations in Cambria, Bedford, and Somerset. And I'm going to tell you something, you can get a permit and approval, a law quicker than you can in Blair County. I just invested $1 million in Cambria, just for the same reason, when I'm here trying to get anything done, get an approval. same reason, when I'm here trying to get anything done, getting approval, going through all these commissions, it's just some, it's just easier to put it somewhere else. So you gotta open up a line of communication with small business. That's who's footing a lot of the bill for the county. I can tell you that. I see the revenue out at the school district and without us, you're toast. I mean, there's, there's no revenue. And, and to get back to Scott's point, I'll tell you what, with employees, we did it at the school district and we cut taxes. What you gotta look at when you're dealing with government and once you're an elected official, you figure this out. We never once furloughed one employee. We waited until they got laid off or they switched and took another job and we actually looked at them jobs and we, we eliminated some of them. We, to this day don't have an assistant superintendent for two years. That's how you get things done. Business, you gotta be thinking like a businessman.
Thank you. Carol Taylor?
I think I take the approach that the communication and being out in the community is the most important thing. Talking to small businesses is one part of it. I grew up in that, in that atmosphere. My father was a small business owner. And then as an attorney, of course, although I didn't recognize it at the time, when I went into it, it's actually running a small business, right? So hearing people's issues with respect to that, but also understanding the issues of the outline rural areas that surround those cities and the various groups within our small cities within Blair County, not just Altoona. We need to develop a communication between the commissioner's office and all the disparate groups that have an interest in this county growing and, and thriving. Um, and I think a real understanding of that requires a commissioner not to just be in an office behind a desk and looking at budgets, but to be out there really seeing firsthand what the issues are and what people's needs are in those communities.
Thank you. Amy Webster?
Thank, thank you. Well, I have been a part of the business community here in Blair County for at least 35 years. So I do have a lot of knowledge and, and have a lot of relationships with folks. And that didn't go away when I became a commissioner. I continue to have rela- those relationships and to talk to those folks and be interested in their businesses. As, um, Commissioner Burke indicated a minute ago, we, who are the commissioners at the time, are members of the Chamber of Commerce and we have the opportunity to then have communication with and join in the chamber events and see and learn about what's going on in different businesses. And I, it's fascinating to know about all the different, um, committees that exist. And we as commissioners have the option to serve on those. We don't have to, but we do. I, in particular, am interested in the agricultural community. And so I have been on the Farm City Committee and that's been very enlightening. It's been a, a great opportunity to meet more small business people. We don't have just small businesses though. We have some big businesses that are very influential in not only the, the country and the county, but in the world. And it's great to see those and encourage them. Um, as commissioners though, we don't want to, well, we shouldn't want to micromanage what the businesses are doing. We should be here as a support, as a support group. Uh, if they need assistance, if they, if they need assistance with grant funds and they need a letter of support or whatever they need from us, we try to do that to make sure that our businesses grow and thrive. We also like to deal with them in order to make sure that we have good services to offer to the people. Sometimes we're able to use private business and contract with them in order to, um, provide things that we need to provide as the county. Thanks.
Thank you. And Scott Barker?
Well, I think, uh, I can agree with a lot of what was said up here. Uh, I understand communication is definitely important. I'm glad that we have something, an organization like the Blair Chamber of Commerce. And it's a, it's a good and right thing that the, uh, uh, county commissioners are involved in that and listen to that. I think that, however, as much as we want business to be, to be successful, I mean, none of us up here would want business in the area to be unsuccessful. Um, it's also important for county government to remember, remember to kind of, uh, stay in its lane. And, you know, what I would want to do is, is listen to, uh, the, the trouble that different businesses in the area are running into when it comes to county government and see if there's ways that we can become more efficient so as to kind of get out of the way so the businesses can do what they do best. And that is commerce. Uh, I'll give you a good example of that, uh, something that's very important to the ag community, which makes up quite a, quite a bit of Blair County. And that is, uh, the Clean and Green Program. The Clean and Green Program is something that benefits farmers and people with rural, uh, uh, land in the area. It has benefited my family. It allows for people to use their land to, uh, for hunting, for farming and other things. And it gives them a little bit of a tax break. The problem is the county has been a little bit confusing to deal with instructing people on how to take advantage of that program. I don't think the county should be afraid of giving a solid, informative, educational answer, instruction to people who live in Blair County of how they can take advantage of a program like Clean and Green. Yes, I understand it would cut, cut tax revenue, but our primary job isn't to generate revenue. Our primary job is to, to serve the people of Blair County. And many people in Blair County would be well-served if they understood the program, uh, the Clean and Green Program a little bit better. I'm sure there's other examples of that in county government. And that's what I would want to see us to do, doing, to respond to, to, uh, business needs in the area. See how we can improve as we serve them so they can do their job even better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna work back, uh, starting with Carol Taylor this time. Question is effectively housing inmates has been an ongoing problem for the county. Based on your current knowledge of that situation, what would you recommend as a strategy to find a workable solution?
Housing inmates is, is one of the bigger issues that the commissioners are going to have to deal with, um, in the present time. We need to find solutions. Not looking backwards, saying what was not done previously, but right now it's obvious that the prison is insufficient to meet the needs. Um, we as commissioners are going to have to take a look at what is economically feasible to do. It appears that the most, the, the most sensible course of action would be to build a new prison, which is going to have sufficient capability, infrastructure to deal with what needs to be done. But the prison is so old right now that at this point, what we're looking at is a decrepit building with serious health considerations and an inability to provide the kind of services that we need within the prison. As for the prison system itself, I believe that going back to some of our priorities in the county in terms of dealing with mental health and substance abuse, the prison is probably not the location to deal with mental health programs, uh, problems. And so we need to deal with that as a separate issue, which will take some of the pressure off of the present prison system as it exists. It is not equipped nor is there enough, is there the type of personnel needed to deal with mental health issues? And unfortunately, instead of treating mental health, we're incarcerating. That would take some of the pressure off if we deal with that problem as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Manny Nichols?
What would we do with the prison? I couldn't truthfully sit here and give you an answer without seeing a feasibility study, looking at the documents. I could sit here and lie to you and tell you what you want to hear. But I would like to know, explore, or if we ever did explore working with outside counties, where they're at, do they need a prison? Did we ever talk to any counties? That'd be the number one thing. Number two, this feasibility study, I would like to look at that and see what, how many people we can actually house in that building? Do we need another building? Do we, can we use some of this money that's coming from the settlement? I don't know that. So honestly, I don't like to comment on something unless I truly understand it, looked at the feasibility study. And I, I know a little bit about that, working at the school district. So I'm not going to sit up here and lie to you and tell you we need a new prison. We don't need a new prison. And that's where I stand on that.
Thank you. Dave Kessling?
For me, I've, uh, spent 35 years of my life in prison, um, administering prisons. It's not behind the bars. Um, I, uh, have spent 24 years in the state, uh, retired as a deputy superintendent. I've been a warden at three different correctional facilities. So, um, I think I understand prisons probably more than most. Um, you know, again, it concerns me that we've waited 154 years before we decide it's an issue. To give you an example, uh, two years, two and a half years ago, I went up to Clearfield as the warden. Um, and they asked me to stay within budget. They said he hadn't been in budget since 2015. They had a use of force problem. The other thing is, is when I interviewed for the job, I did some research on it and I found out that they were paying, they paid over $3 million over the last three years to house inmates in other, in other counties. It's very, very expensive to do that for a county. So when I went to, and I interviewed for the job and I accepted the job, I told them, I said, I'll never send another inmate out of here if I can help it. I said, that money needs to stay in this county. I'm not going to spend $3 million in another county. It needs to stay in this county. I'm proud to say that in three years, we didn't. We didn't send any inmates. What I did do is I went in, I looked at, uh, I looked at the prison system. We were at 128 beds. Um, we went to 220. So we went from our capacity being 128 and I increased that to 220. Um, so we were able to save money with doing that. Again, with the prison system, we have a feasibility study. I wish it would be public. I have no clue why it's secret. We're not talking about cameras. We're not talking about anything. But what I can tell you is that our prison system is dangerous. It's archaic. We have things growing out of it. It's not safe for the corrections officer there and it's not safe for the inmates there. So unfortunately, folks, we are faced with doing something. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura?
Thank you. Um, so one of my, um, seat County Commissioners Association committees is the Courts and Corrections Committees Committee. And through that committee, I had the opportunity to volunteer to be on a, what we call the Title 37 Review Committee, which is a group of wardens from around the state. Um, I'm the only county commissioner. Um, I must be the only one crazy enough to, to do it. Um, but we are looking at, uh, proposed revisions to Title 37, which governs the minimum standards for county jails. Um, and the gentleman who runs that committee is named Tom, Tom Grayshaw. And he is in charge of the people who come in and do our licensing and check out our facility and give us citations if we aren't in compliance. Um, and when I met him and told him what county I was from, he looked at me and said, oh, you need a new prison. And I believed him because I've toured the prison and I've seen some of the issues that, um, Mr. Kessling kind of alluded to. Um, our rated capacity is 355 and we are under that number. Um, at least we were as of the last prison board meeting. Generally, we run under that number. Um, but the, because of the age of the facility, um, there are challenges and the, the housing that we have is not, um, adequate for modern day notions of what incarceration should be. Um, it's not efficient. We're not energy efficient. We're not efficient in terms of moving prisoners from one place to another within the prison. Um, we need more staff than we would need if we had a modern facility. Um, we don't really have adequate facilities to prepare meals for that many people three times a day. Um, there are a lot of issues. Um, and as Carol said, it, it really goes beyond just the, you know, having a place to put people. It goes to, we can't provide the programming. Just running an internet line so we could restart our GED classes was an astronomical feat because, um, of the age of the building and the fact that it's not set up for internet. So it's really just not, it's, it's just an obsolete building, um, and something we need to do something about.
Thank you. Scott Barker?
I'm sorry, the question was about housing inmates, correct?
Yeah, I can reread it. Um, effectively housing inmates has been an ongoing problem for the county. Based on your current knowledge of that situation, what would you recommend as a strategy to find a workable solution?
Well, I definitely agree with, uh, some of the comments regarding the prison. I have a feeling that's going to be a reoccurring theme this evening. Um, but that's, that's not the short, that's not a short-term solution. I, I, I can't imagine, I would ima- I would think it's going to be three, four years if we started the day before that would be done. So we do need to be thinking about what can we do now. And something that I think, from what I understand, uh, would be beneficial now is to see how we can help the court system be more efficient. Um, I was surprised to learn, uh, that there's a, a, a high percentage of people being housed in Blair County prison who haven't been sentenced yet. And that isn't helping. It's good that we're running under, uh, max capacity. That's good. It would like, I'd like to see that number get a little bit lower. That makes, I would imagine, I've ne- never worked in prison, nor have I, uh, been in prison for any length of time. Um, but I would imagine that fewer inmates makes it easier for the correctional officers and the warden, uh, to do their jobs. Um, so I would like to see our court systems kind of work on their backlog, become a little more efficient. What can we do to help the judges do their jobs more efficiently? Um, fortunately for the voters in Blair County, uh, we have a judicial race going right out, right now. So if I were you, I'd pay close attention to what these men are saying. And if you hear them talk about efficiency or, uh, management of the courthouse, pay attention to that because I think those things will help, um, the, the prison population. If we can, if we can move these folks through the system just a little faster, that helps. And every day that they're there, they cost us money. So on the management side, we don't want to spend too much money. Uh, but we definitely, uh, would be, I think, benefit from a, a court system that can maybe help us move those prisoners through, give them their, their day in court in a fair, expedient and efficient way. And I think that would also help reduce the overall prison population. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Webster?
Thank you. It is a wonderful idea to be able to say, well, let's have the judges and the court system do certain things so that we don't have so many inmates. That would be great. But unfortunately, within the authority of the commissioners, there is nothing that we can do. The judges are elected. They get to determine how things go through the courts and how quickly they go. So that's not really a, a workable solution. Um, instead, we have to look at what can we actually do in the prison. I have to give our warden a lot of credit. She's been very creative, especially during COVID, when we had to segregate different people. We've, she has taken and we have encouraged her to try creative in different ways to house people in different areas where wasn't really housing. It's probably not the best solution, but at least it'll help us to get through until we can go to the next solution, which is, I was, and I agree with Commissioner Burke, a new prison, which is a horrifying thought because it's going to be expensive, but we have to just do it. I envision a campus where we have different areas for mental health, for juveniles, for male inmates, for female inmates. And I believe that we can make it big enough that we can actually rent out space to other counties. The other possibility would be to actually work with other counties to create a larger area prison for several counties to use. And in that respect, we all have our own con- different contribution based on the number of prisoners we have at the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, uh, is going to start with, uh, Dave Kessling. Blair County has some viable economic opportunities related to trail development that would require that the county makes an ongoing investment. Would you support such an investment even if it might initially cost you some political capital? Dave Kessling?
Uh, the ans- short answer to that is yes. I, uh, my wife and I, Tracy's here in the, in the audience, we are trail people. Um, I'm on the Trail Committee down in Williamsburg. Um, we understand. So when, when you're with the trail, you go out, what do you do? You spend money. You go out for the day, you hike, you bike. And for us, we come back, we look for something comfortable. We want something to eat. We're tired. We spend money in the community, staying there in that community. And we look at the research, the community, we look at the history of the community. So we spend as much time in that community as we can. We actually travel and we'll spend a weekend or a week in an area, just in the area, get as much as we can. So we're, we're putting a lot of money into that community. There are studies that's been done. We had someone come in from Confluence, I can't remember the lady's name. And she showed us the statistics of how much money this brings in. So I also believe as a government, you need, it takes a community. The government doesn't solve all the issues, but a community does. And I think a government needs to invest. If you want to see your, your community grow, then I think you need to invest in it. And that may, that may say that you're putting money in front of it first before you start to see the return on it. But this, there's a lot of economic growth with the trail systems. You're going to get, you're going to get, um, restaurants, you're going to get bars, you're you're going to get hotels. You know, you're going to have people come in here, and if, and there's people who, they start on a trail system, and they spend weeks, if not, if not months, on these trail systems. And those people spend, you know, $700, $800, $1,000 in an area. So I think it's a, I think we should invest into it. I think that, you know, there's going to be a lot of money coming from the federal government as well as the state government for Pennsylvania. And I think that we need to invest in it, and we should do it as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Manny?
I would be on board with that 100%. I think anytime we can do anything for the community, and especially to bring small business in, which I think that's what would happen with, with a couple more trails, I think it's a great idea. And the studies I've seen, it does lead to business development. And anytime we can get people out of the house and, and give them something to do, I, I think that communities, our community's missing that. There's, you look around, there's just not, nothing really to do around here. It seems to me like when I'm riding around, they're all in the house, and I guess on the TV or the phones, because that's pretty much all you got. But that'd be my answer on it. I'd, I'd 100% be with it.
Thank you. Carol?
So I'm an avid hiker. And honestly, before I ever lived in this area, I used to come out here to go hiking. Three hours away, four hours away, I drove out here. This area is rich in natural beauty, the Juniata River, the lakes that we have, a lot of which is in the county. The best way to capitalize on this for our communities, to build up our communities, is to have a trail system that's connected throughout the county. And that will help a great deal in terms of folks getting out, riding their bikes, stopping to have ice cream. It makes our communities much more appealing to anybody who wants to move to this area, and much more appealing to those who already live in this area so that they want to raise their children here, stay here, and invest in the community. So I see absolutely no downside in that investment, because that investment does come back to us. I have lived in various places, so I've seen where that kind of investment has paid off. My daughter lived in Durham, North Carolina. They have an extensive trail system connecting up all the communities, which people use for walking, walking their dogs, riding their bikes. It has led to sort of a renaissance, in part. There's a lot of reasons why Durham had a renaissance. But that was one of them, quite honestly. You look at the neighborhoods with all these lovely trails, and you say, hey, that's a place I'd like to live. So I'm 100% in favor of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy?
Could you please repeat the question?
Sure. Blair County has some viable economic opportunities related to trail development that would require that the county makes an ongoing investment. Would you support such an investment even if it might initially cost you some political capital?
To answer the actual question, I don't know that it would cost any political capital. I think that people have made it clear that they like the idea of trails and parks and recreation, and that's probably, probably a big part of why people live here. It is a beautiful area. We have great mountains and trails and, and a lot of, a lot of just neat things that we can do, riding our bikes. We've had the Lauer Trail for, what, 30 years maybe now? So this is not new to, to the community. And I'm not sure that we'd have to spend money. I know that as a commissioner, I've been looking at different grants and things that are available. And there is money out there to help us get these kinds of things started and to keep them moving. So I would, I don't think it is a negative thing. I think it's a positive thing. And I know that there are grants available to help us. Sure, we might have to put up some matching funds, but that's not going to be, that's not going to be the full extent of, of an entire trail system. The other thing is that we do have trails and parks that already exist, and we can tie those things together so that it makes a little more sense and it's more accessible for people. So it's a part of a, a larger plan to not only connect us to the rest of the world, so to speak, the 911 trail and all those other ones that are out there, but also to connect our community with, with, among ourselves, with each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Barger?
Yeah, first to respond to Commissioner Webster regarding my comments and helping the court. I, I think it's a myopic view of county government to say that just because it's not our purview or our authority, that we can't serve the courts by asking them, what can we do to help you? How can we be available to you? Is there a project or a study that you're working on that we could assist you with? And then roll up our sleeves and help them. That doesn't mean we have the authority. It just means we're willing to be servant leaders who'll help the judges do their jobs more efficiently. Regarding the trail, listen, folks, I, I love Disney World. I, I would love to take my kids to Disney World and buy them a $45 ice cream cone and see Mickey Mouse. But when your roof is leaking and your furnace isn't working, I don't think it's responsible to commit to not even one penny of county money until we address the more important, critical financial issues facing our county. I don't see it as being responsible at all. I know it's good. It's, I ride the trails. The trails are great. I love riding to Williamsburg and get, I get an ice cream cone there, but they don't cost $45. It's a great day out. My mother enjoys it. My wife enjoys it. My kids, I wish they would enjoy it a little bit more. It's a great perk. It's a, it's a, it's a nice thing. We do not have the luxury, unfortunately, where we are in this county, to waste any money, not any, on nice luxury things that we don't need. We have to, you know, I had a friend in my church tell me one time that the problem with people today is they get their, their needers and their wanters all confused, the things that they need with, confused with the things that they want. Yes, do we want a trail system? Yes. Do we want lots of recreation, things to do outside? Absolutely, we do. You know what we need to address this pension problem? We need to address the prison problem. Now, after we do that, we get things kind of squared away, things start looking a little bit better, I'm open to discuss it, but not until, not until that. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Burke?
Thank you. It's, this is a funny question for me because I spent most of my day, when I wasn't in meetings, working on the trails. So there's a lot going on right now. The Chamber of Transportation Committee has had several meetings, and we had a peer-to-peer grant to do a study on the trail. And we're kind of trying to figure out the next steps at this point. The political capital doesn't scare me so much as the, the money. So I have sat in on a lot of CCAP sessions about trails and talked one-on-one with a commissioner who has, is in a county where they've developed their system. And she, I forget the exact number per year, she told me we should think about investing in our trails, but I fell off my chair. So there is luckily a lot of grant money out there. I think there's grant money that could help us get started, help us hire someone who could develop a plan and figure out the financial sustainability of it. But I think we need to think broader than just recreation, and we need to think broader than just connecting the 6 to 10 trail to the Lauer Trail and making sure the 9/11 trail going through our county is nice. We need to think about multimodal transportation. There's tons of money out there right now from the federal government for sustainable modes of transportation. Think about your kids being able to go, like if you're in Holidaysburg, go, connect from what would be the Lauer Trail to the trail behind the Y and go all the way to Lakemont and go to a curve game on their bikes or on foot. I mean, wouldn't that be amazing? Take that all the way to Altoona, give people a way to actually commute without having a car, I think would be an amazing thing beyond just the recreational benefits. So I just think we need to think more broadly, and we really need to look at how we can make it something that we can afford.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to start with Manny Nichols this round. And Manny, in a highly competitive employment market, what will you do to make the county a more competitive employer?
Can you repeat that? I didn't hear that one.
Sure. In a highly competitive employment market, what will you do to make the county a more competitive employer?
Business, business, business. That's what you got to do. Infrastructure. You're, you're not ever going to get anywhere with employees unless you have the business here, and you have the housing. Housing is number one right now. I, I don't see us attracting any huge business without the housing. We, we got a major shortage. And I think that's where it starts. You fix that. I don't know if people know, the homeless numbers just in Altoona has doubled since October. So I think you, you got to look at the homeless. You, you got to find a housing, you know, these buildings, it's all sitting around. If we can rehab them, I wouldn't want to see new buildings popping up everywhere when we got buildings all throughout Blair County. But I would probably run that way with it. That would be my opinion on it.
Thank you. Dave?
Oh, I'm sorry. Could you repeat the question again?
Sure.
I was listening to yours.
In a highly competitive employment market, what will you do to make the county a more competitive employer?
Ladies and gentlemen, I worked in Blair County for two and a half years as a deputy sheriff. In my eight months that I've been scouring throughout Blair County, talking to people, I've talked to numerous people who work for Blair County and don't work for Blair County anymore. I think you need to start treating people like they're people. They do not feel valued. They don't feel that they, their voice matters. The department heads are frustrated. So I think that the first thing we do is we start going in and we start making our people feel like they're wanted, and they're needed, and they're appreciated. I have my, my campaign chair is here. She spent 21 years in Blair County, and 21 years she retired. Do you know what she got? Nothing. She didn't get a letter. She wasn't looking for a Rolex watch. She didn't get anything. So we have people, I was down at a Veterans' Breakfast, the gentleman worked in the Veterans Administration. He volunteered. He said, I worked there for a year. Do you want to know why I left? I said, sure, if you want to tell me. He said, the most vile place I've ever worked in my life. And this gentleman was in his 50s. So I think that we need to start treating our people like people, start getting them to get involved. The other thing is, is I've always been involved in sports teams. I've been involved in tactical teams. And what does that mean? That means that we always had a goal. We always had a goal. We always were looking for something. I don't know that there's a goal. We, the, they, people in the county need to start focusing on a goal. What, you know, the goal, what we're trying to do, better services, you know, for people, treating them right when they come in, and things like that. So it pays part of it, but I think we can do it without costing a lot of money by just listening to, treating people, and letting them know that we care.
Thank you. Laura Burke?
Thank you. So I, I agree with a lot, some of what Mr. Kessling said. I also was a county employee. I was a law clerk for a total of about five years at two different times. And I will say that I didn't know who the commissioners were when I worked there, until Bruce Irber was elected, because I knew him before, before he became a commissioner. I didn't, I, well, I think I probably knew Don after a while, but we never saw them and didn't really interact with them or know who they were. So I do think that a lot of it is just communication, showing up, making sure people know that you're there and you're working and you care, and, you know, you're working just as hard as they are. And I think that, and I, I think I said this at one of the other forums, but the county, we have very different departments. And it's kind of like, if you think about a condominium. So like, each department has a very different, different environment within it, and not all of them are controlled by the commissioners. So I think some of it depends on which department you're in. But I think there's room for improvement and room for valuing our employees. We started an employee newsletter. We're not always timely in getting that out, but I think people appreciate that. And we do, we recognize work anniversaries in that, and kind of try to, try to make sure our employees know, you know, who's in what departments and how we all fit together. But I think a lot of it is, we need to do some, some better education and planning and leadership around, you know, what is your role? How do you fit in with all the other people who are working around you in the building? And I think the other big thing, which I should have probably started with, is that we need to pay people more. And, and I think that kind of goes without saying, if you know anything about our situation, but we need to pay competitively and, and show people that they are valued.
Thank you. Scott?
I've heard, I've heard stories. Part of my research, I talked about earlier, has been talking to as many department heads and county employees that have been permitted to talk to me. Some of them have not been permitted to speak with me. But those that would, I've been listening, I've been trying to learn, and I, I begin to hear the same sorts of, of things being mentioned, and that is that there's a detach, a detachment between the employees and the row officers and county leadership. It sure does smell like a leadership problem to me. And I will say this, it may be politically dangerous me, to, for me to do so, but factually, it won't be because I'm going to compliment Laura Burke, and she's not running against me right now in any meaningful way. And that is, I've, I've heard too many times from people who work in the county, elected officials, people who live in the county, that if you want something done, you have to go to Laura Burke. If you could talk to one of the other two, it's not going to happen. That, that's one third of what we should have. Our county commissioners should be approachable. They should be present. They should be attending meetings. They should be rolling up their sleeves and helping. That attitude of servant leadership, of what can I do to help you do your job better, that trickles down, folks. That's, that's an infectious attitude. People don't just quit jobs because of money. They quit jobs because of management. They don't like working there anymore. We can change that by treating our people better. And you do that by demonstrating it. You become the kind of leader that people want to work for. You listen to them. You go to the meeting. You learn things. You help them. How can I be of assistance? Not trying to run the show. You're trying to help the people who are doing the work do the work more efficiently, make them feel valued. It's, it's one thing to give somebody a certificate or a handshake, hey, atta boy, keep up the good work. It's another thing to sit down with them and do the work alongside them, you know? I found that in my personal career experience to be a very valuable way of motivating and valuable, valuing people to get down with them, beside them, and work alongside them and learn to value them. Yeah, that's, thank you.
Thank you. Amy Webster?
Thank you. Since I've been in office, I have found, from exit interviews from, from employees, people don't come to the county for the pay. They come to the county for the benefits. We have a lot of widows that work for us that, that need to have those benefits. They're not in a position where, where pay is the pri, primary thing. They're looking at the benefits. Everybody that stays long enough gets a wonderful pension when they leave. There's also medical benefits and insurances. So it's not that the county doesn't do anything. The county does. However, they're not always things that are recognized. We have offered creative options for our employees over the last couple of years because we've found that with COVID, we can do different things and, and be creative. And it, of course, depends on the department and whether they're able to do that, or whether the department head is interested in doing that. But we have, we can have flexible schedules, part-time folks that, that would have been full-time previously, where we divide up a couple of different positions. There's been some remote work. So there have been a lot of things that we have done in order to encourage people to come here. In terms of the, the overall area, because I'm not quite sure if the, if the question is timed, is just relating the county itself, or our, our entire county and all the employers, as I mentioned before, we need to get, to, in order to get jobs, we, we need to concentrate on helping new businesses and encouraging people to come in and from outside the area. And of course, with that, we need to have some work that we do on, on housing in order to, to draw people here. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol?
As I interpreted the question, I believe it was about keeping and hiring county employees in an environment where there is a, a shortage of qualified employees, and so there's a lot of competitiveness. I think that in order to attract talent, you have to pay them. In order to keep talent, you have to have company morale. In other words, leadership where you feel valued, where you feel that you're all stakeholders, you're in it together, that you're listened to. I think the commissioners do have a role in that, in that, like Laura has been very involved, I know with children and youth, really jumping in and taking a leadership role to try to help with a very, very needed service. We have to take the role of being proactive with respect to the departments that are struggling with morale. So I do think you have to pay people so that they can afford to work, because in this day and age, most young individuals with degrees in various areas that we could use in county employment, that have special talents. that have special talents are going to look to the fact as to whether they can afford childcare. Can they afford housing? Can they afford to put food on the table? It's a very real consideration. We can't attract good folks if we don't pay them. But if you want them to stay, it isn't just money. It is a culture that gets developed. You must feel valued, listened to, policies put in place that make it a pleasant place to work. And that's going to vary from department to department. So I gather I'm, I'm going to make a generality there that I can't get specific with. But I know looking over my employment history, everybody faces the same thing. You can work in a, at a place that pays you really well, but the culture is poor. And if that is the case, you won't stay. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question. There is always concern among voters that people behind the scenes are shaping the political motivations of certain candidates. Convince me that you're an independent thinker. This one starts this time with Manny.
Thank you. And I just wanted to clarify, I misunderstood the first question. I thought it was about bringing in employees to the county. So I, that's my fault. I didn't misunderstand, but they know where I am, my county employees. So that's, that's no secret. But I can tell you one thing. I am one of the few that financed 96 to 98% of my campaign and I did that and I did it with small donations. So I really owe nobody. I, I owe no special interest. I had none of the establishment endorse me. I, I stayed away from it all. I wanted to run my campaign like that. I did get four billboards donated to me that, that's all I heard about. But I don't know a camp, a candidate up here that would turn down four billboards. But like I said, my campaign was financed by me. This isn't about the money. I'm not running for this position about the money. I'm running about this position to get something accomplished. That's why I ran for school board. I didn't get paid for school board. It actually cost me money. So I'm, I'm running to make a difference. And one thing I don't have to worry about, I have no one to answer to. Nobody controls me and that's how I am. I speak like I feel.
Thank you. Carol?
I think one thing that folks know about me is that I'm a straight shooter. I speak my mind. I analyze things. I take a look and I speak from the heart. I'm running for commissioner not because anybody pushed me to or cajoled me to or offered me anything. I'm running for commissioner because I care about the people who live in our community in Blair County. I have spent most of my life in some kind of either as a lawyer, pro bono work, public service, stuff I wasn't paid for. And to work in the field that I do now is a labor of love, but it's certainly not one that encompasses any financial rewards. And so I'm one of those true blue folks who actually wants to be of service. My life is about service because honestly, I don't know what purpose we have while we exist if we don't make a difference where we can. And so I want to be a commissioner because I want to make that difference, but there's nobody behind me. And as, as the Democratic chair knows, I said to her, if I run a campaign, I'm going to say exactly what I mean and mean what I say and no holds bar. So that's the way I am. You see me? This is what you get. I'll always give you an honest opinion and you'll know it's not governed by anyone else. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy?
Thank you. I am not being backed by anyone. I have been paying for this entirely by myself. Last time when I ran, I did listen to a lot of folks that, that had comments and thoughts about what should happen. But once I took office and I learned what really is involved as being a commissioner and that our interests are to serve the county as a whole and not to serve one or two people that have an agenda. I learned that it was important for me to know what was happening, speak my mind and stay independent. And that's exactly what I've done. There are people that had supported me last time, not too many of them, but there are a couple of them and they're, they're off supporting somebody else this time because they're thinking that they can influence that person. Well, that's fine if that's what you want to do. But for me, I've learned that it's very important to communicate with people exactly what it is that you stand for, and that's exactly what I do. Nobody's behind me. Nobody's giving me money. Nobody's giving me directions. I am independent and I am, I have made comments that probably are politically not smart, but it's how I feel. It's what I've done and my record speaks for itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott?
The question is?
There's always concerns among voters that people behind the scenes are shaping the political motivations of certain candidates. Convince me, convince them that you're an independent thinker.
It's tough to convince people that you're an independent thinker. How do you, how do you convince someone that you're an independent thinker? You know, which of us is an independent thinker? All by yourself. No one else thinks like you. No one else agrees with you. No one else believes what you believe. Which of us here? We're the only ones who believe what we believe. We're the only ones who care about. Nobody else cares about what I care about. I'm, I'm independent. I don't think it works that way. I think there's lots of people who back me. There's lots of people who believe things like I do, things like, hey, the government should be transparent. Hey, the government should be limited. Hey, they should tell us what they're doing with our tax money. Hey, people should tell the truth. Hey, you know, I, I think that, I think that the United States of America is a pretty darn good place to live. I think the government left unfettered goes out of control and steps on our rights and, and strips away our freedoms. Like, you know what? If those people are backing me, I say, bring them on. Yeah, I'll take all of them, every single one of them, a thousand more please and all the money that they bring with them. Because I agree with that stuff. Now, now, am I, are my thoughts controlled by them? Ask any of them. They'll tell you, no, I'm too cantankerous for that. I'm too disagreeable. I, I, I'm a devil's advocate more than not. I disagree with every single one of them. If you want to think, if, if anyone here thinks that I'm easily controllable or manipulated or cajoled or browbeat, ask my wife. She'll tell you. I'm stubborn and independent minded and that's the way I was raised to be. I could appeal to my father, but I, he is not here to, to say otherwise. So I think that would be in poor taste, but I got it from him. And I don't think there's anything wrong with gathering support of like-minded Americans who want to see the best for Blair County, pooling our energy and our resources and getting the work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura?
Well, finance reports aren't due till Friday, so I guess we'll find out. So no, I, I think that my record is the easiest way to look at my independence and ability to be independent. And I can tell you, I've gotten, you know, contacts from people in my own party who are angry and asked me why I voted a certain way. I knew I was on to something. Early on, I got an email from one, a former Republican commissioner who's not here tonight telling me you're the kind of independent thinker we need. You know, I'm so happy you voted this way on, I can't even remember what the issue was. But I think a big part of this job is having the understanding and intelligence to be able to listen to the advice you're getting from the experts who work around you and then come to your own conclusions based on your values about them and what decision and how you need to vote. So that's what I try to do every day. And I think it's been working for me. I think my staff would tell you that, that I am in fact independent. Drives them a little crazy, I think sometimes, but yeah, I think that's something that I'm proud of is that I always come to my own conclusion.
Thank you. Dave?
This is a pretty tough question, I think. We talk about independent. What it means to me is that I'm not going to be controlled by anyone. I have my own set of values, my own set of principles, and I'm going to apply those for what I think is best for the people of Blair County. I also think though, you need to work as a team. I think that you need to be able to cooperate. There's three commissioners. If you're so independent, that you're going to shut them down, then you're not going to get anything done. So you're going to have to cooperate. You're going to have to work with them. Same with the, you know, being on teams. Like I said, I've been on teams. You, you know, you go out and you, you have a mission, so you're going to have to work together to get that done. So I think it's, I think it's a tricky question. I think, again, as it relates to this, I think as an independent, I've, I've started this run since September. I think I'm the first one that came out of the box saying that I was running for commissioner. I've not paired with anyone. I'm not pairing with anybody. I ran independently and solely just by myself. I'm going to continue to do that. You know, I, I do have endorsements. I'm very proud of those endorsements because those endorsements are by leaders of this community. I have them from the district attorney's office, the sheriff's office, the police in this area. I'm very proud of those. Does that mean I work for somebody? No, it doesn't. I think that they recognize me because they've worked with me that I am independent. I will speak up. I'll say my mind, but in saying that, we also need to work together as a team to get things done. After all, we work for you. I don't work, you don't work for me. I work for you. And for, to do that, we have to work together. I think independent thinkers are good. I think you need to get your points across, but in the end, you're going to have to compromise and you're going to have to work together and get things done for the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave, we're going to start with you this time. If you had input into tonight's questions, what question would you hope to have been able to answer?
What does a commissioner do? I think all of us should have been asked the question of what a commissioner does. I, I think that it's, I've looked at this. I've done some research on it. Obviously I've worked in, in the county government, so I had some understanding of, of it. A commissioner's job is very complex. There are certain things by law that we must do. You're like the CFO of the county. You're the chief financial officer. You're dealing with all the money. The money's coming into the county and you're the one that is going to figure out and funnel the money where you feel it needs to go. You're going to listen to your department heads. They're going to give you budgets. You're going to haggle back and forth with budgets. You're going to end up approving their budget. You're going to tell them what they can have and what they can't have. The grants and things like that coming in. So I think it's extremely important. You know, you're going to appoint people to boards and commissions and authorities. I also think that that's extremely important because once you appoint someone to an authority, they're going to be there for several years and once you appoint them, they're there. There's nothing you can do about it. So it's very important when you're looking at a, at a, at a community and, and a county that you're, you're doing your research and understanding what it is. So I, I think that my question would have been, what's, what's a commissioner do? Thank you.
Thank you. Laura, same question.
I'm sorry. Can you repeat it?
Sure.
Understanding.
If you had input into tonight's questions, what question would you hope to have been able to answer?
It's hard to come up with that. I wouldn't want it to be something that, you know, only Amy and I as incumbents can answer, but I think I would lean toward, you know, like what is the one success of the current term? But of course, that's not a fair question to ask people who haven't been in the position. So that's all I got.
So what question?
If you had.
That's the best question yet. That, that's a good one. I like that. What is, what question would I have liked to have been asked and then I'm supposed to answer it as well? Okay. Well, first let me say thank you for reminding me that financial reports are due. I do have a confession to make, and make in light of that. To date, my largest single contributor is my mother and I probably will listen to what she says. So I take back some of that. I think the question I would like to have asked is, what's your favorite book? Why not? That would be different. What's your favorite book? And, and as a pastor, I would be tempted to pick something out of the Bible maybe. And from there I would say, you know, there's a bunch, but if it was, if it was outside of holy scripture, it's got to be Atlas Shrugged for me. So that would be my favorite book. Within holy scripture, probably it's going to be a weird one. No one's going to like me for it, probably. It's not going to score me any points, but the Gospel of Mark. So that would be my question and those would be my answers.
Thank you. Amy?
I would probably want to ask.
Sorry.
Oh, I thought you said Manny. Sorry.
Sorry about that.
I'm having a little trouble.
We can't hear. Yeah, I think that I would ask of the incumbents, what has been your, your great, what is your greatest success? And for those who are not incumbents, what is the, your favorite thing that you, not favorite, that's not the best thing. What is the one item that, that you would want to do in particular? Because you've noticed something about a department or whatever that is important to you. So I can't answer that for those who aren't incumbents, but I can answer for, for myself. I believe that I'm proudest of the infrastructure that we have been working on. We have been really truly blessed with many funds that are not taxpayer dollars in terms of being property tax dollars. They're dollars that we paid to the federal and state government that we're getting back. But we've used those to repair, we have great bridge and road program going on. We replaced three bridges last year. We've got, we're working on five now and there's going to be another seven in the next couple of years. We're working on roads. We're working on broadband. These are things that make the community accessible, usable, safe. And they're wonderful for, for all the people. They serve everyone, not just a certain few. So that would be my question and my answer.
Thank you. Carol?
This is a tough one, but as I was sitting here, I thought most of what we talk about is so negative. So the question I would like to hear is, what are the positive attributes of Blair County? What are the wonderful things about Blair County that you treasure? And how would you improve on your vision for the future of Blair County? I came to this area and noticed the breathtaking beauty of the area, the sense of community, the incredible amount of arts that's available, Arts Altoona, the Michler Theater, the universities, the education, the trade school that we have here in Blair County. I saw a lot of promise. I see a lot of promise for growth. And how I would go about improving upon what I see is to tackle some of the issues we talked about tonight. To tackle the issue of opioid addiction, tackle crime, deal with the prison, deal with mental health and providing services to people, a trail system, making this an even better place to live. So that's the question I would like to answer because I want to look to the future of Blair County and not look behind us.
Now, now Manny.
Thanks. The question I'd like to ask, will you commit to Blair County? Will you commit to going to the fire departments at least quarterly? I've been around, I'm on my second round of fire departments and you know what they told me? They've never seen a county official there. It's just something I couldn't believe. I think I would be asking that question. Are you going to get out in the community? Are you going to talk to small business owners? Are you going to talk to law enforcement and fire and what we pay taxes for, the basics? Fire, EMS, law enforcement, highway workers. That's our basics and we're not even getting that accomplished. So that is the question I would have liked to heard and that's all I have to say about.
Thank you.
Thank you. As was noted at the beginning, we did not have opening statements from the candidates. Those essentially are in the, in the program booklet. We asked the commissioner, commissioner candidates each to give us a written statement of why they felt they were uniquely qualified to serve as a commissioner. But we are offering them the opportunity each to do a two-minute closing remarks to hopefully close the sale. So we are going to start with number five, Carol Taylor.
So you might've read a little bit about my bio and honestly, I practiced law for 20 something years. I was a trial lawyer. I did pro bono work for neglected children. I was a trial lawyer. I was a trial lawyer. And at some point, I moved out here with a different vision. And I've worked in, in both the schools as an educator and then in the mental health and addictions field. My focus in doing that has been, and it was a choice that I made, honestly, to invest myself in something that I had passion for, where I felt I could make a difference and overcome my fears in doing so. As commissioner, I would make that same pledge to you, that I would focus on the services that are needed for the county, that I would do it fearlessly, that I will be open-minded, that I will listen to your needs and what your priorities are. And my dedication would be to helping this area grow and to helping the people thrive in this community as best I know how. Living a life of service is the best way I know how to leave, live, live a life of integrity. So that at the end of this, on my dying day, I don't have regrets about how many hours I worked or did I make enough money? Really, did I make a difference? That's the only question we need to ask ourselves. I have five grandchildren. I want them to see a better place. I want all of your grandchildren to have a better future. And that's why I'm running.
Thank you. Amy Webster?
Thank you. I have been a part of this community for my entire adult life. The only time I didn't live here was my first four or five years. And I really didn't have a choice at that point. But I'm fully immersed in Blair County and I've, I graduated from high school here. My first job was here. I worked for my dad pumping gas and helping with inspections on cars. Don't tell the state police about that, though. We weren't supposed to help, I don't think. But, but I think that it's important to recognize that we need people who are truly knowledgeable, involved and a part of this community. And I certainly fit into that particular category. My service in the past couple of years as a commissioner has been 100% conservative. My voting record is conservative. I've been fiscally responsible. I have complained against and voted against pay raises for politicians. I don't think that's appropriate. I've been careful about where your tax dollars go. As I mentioned a little bit earlier, we've, we've taken a lot of the grant monies that we've been able to garner and use that for infrastructure improvements, which are very, very important for our entire community. We have wonderful things here in Blair County. As Carol mentioned, arts, which I love in particular, music, and we have incredibly talented people who are also immersed in this community. Blair County is on a good course. It's not a terrible place that some of the folks have, have painted. We are not plagued by a lot of the problems in the cities. We didn't have riots and things when, during COVID. We have been very blessed here. And I'm done.
Thank you. Scott?
I think I would first want to say that I am very appreciative of the opportunity to run for office. It has been a incredibly enriching experience. And I mean that. I've, I've hated a good part of it. It's, it's a lot of work. It's been, there's been some entertainment in there, interesting accusations thrown at me, those have made for some good late night reads. But I would encourage everyone in this room to run for office for something at least once because it teaches you something. Whether you win or you lose, you learn something by doing it. And it has given me appreciation, really, even though I have some differences with, obviously with some of the sitting commissioners, I have a, a deep appreciation, really, for what they did. At least they got out there and they did it. You know, they're serving. And that says something. And I would encourage each person here to consider at least one, school board, dog catcher, something, anything. Do we even elect dog, dog catchers? I don't even know. Not anymore. Run for something. Run for something. Don't run from it. Run for it. I think that, and I would encourage you to do that because I really do believe that the political battles that we, that, that we are fighting now will be fought and won at the local level. I don't think Washington's coming to save us. I don't think they're going to determine our future. I don't think Harrisburg is going to be much help either. I think where we are going to do the most good is at the local level. It's why I, it's why I'm running. I think school boards, I think county commissioners, row officers, judges, this is where we will fight and win the culture battle. I think it's here. It's not, it's not in Harrisburg. It really isn't. It's not in, it's not in DC. So I would, I would encourage you to be motivated by that. You can make a real difference here. You could make a real difference running for an office like this. And you should, you should consider it, each and every one of you. Because for me, I have appreciated it. And, and I've learned to appreciate those folks who have done it successfully and won and are serving, from township supervisors all the way up. So I would encourage you all to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura?
Thank you. I actually want to use my two minutes first to answer my question since I told you what my question was, but didn't answer it about what I wish had been asked. And so my question would have been, you know, what, what are you most proud of as, from the last three terms? And it's kind of an odd answer for me, but it's our pay policy. So as you all know, we did a salary study. We implemented the salary study. And the pay policy is what governs how we place non-union hires onto the scale and then how they move through that scale if they're promoted. And how we, and we've added to it since we, since we, since we put it in place. But basically, the salary board had to come together. We had to have, I think, several months of special public meetings because it wasn't something we could do behind closed doors. And we needed to be able to have conversations and ask each other questions and make sure we were, we were using the same words to use the same meaning and all of that. And it was, it was a lot of hard work, but we came together and we did it. And we have a process now that has made salary board go so much smoother. Prior to this, we spent a lot of time arguing, especially with our elected officials, when they would have new hires, about what their salary should be, what's comparable, what's, you know, how should their prior experience lead into where they're placed? So this is, has taken a lot of that subjectivity and arguing away and saved us a lot of time and I think led to a lot smoother processes. The other thing I wanted to bring up was the pension plan because it's been mentioned several times. We are significantly underfunded. And I want to make sure, just to do a little bit of education about that. From the year 2004 until 2013, over the course of those 10 years, the commissioners who were in office at the time only put in a total of $800,000 in the pension plan over 10 years. Not one year, $800,000, but $800,000 total. So Commissioner Erb deserves a lot of credit for showing us the importance of that. And I can tell you more, but I'm getting the red flag.
I think we, I think we lack leadership in this, in this county. And again, that's not a dig on the commissioners that are here. I just look at, we're, we're failing to plan. We continue to get these big ticket items thrown in our faces that we didn't plan for. And ultimately, it's going to affect us as taxpayers and myself. We talk about commitment. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm retired. I have a pension. I have my medical care. I don't need to do this. I financially don't need to do this. I'm doing this because I care about this community and I care about where this community is going. And I'm not going to sit on the sidelines and be a critic. I want to jump in. I want to roll my sleeves up. I want to go in and learn and understand and try to make the best decisions that I can for the people, the people sitting in here for this counting. As a warden, you're working 24 hours a day, seven days a week. You're on call all the time. So that's also prepared me for this job, knowing that it's not going to be an eight-hour day, a day job. It's not going to be a 10-hour day job. You know, when we talk about, I know it's a very hard job. I'm not sure why any of us up here are running for it. Because you, you spend, I spent eight, eight months, and I can't tell you how much money on it. This is the longest job interview I've ever had. Like, and it just keeps going on and on and on. And it's very costly. But, you know, it's, it's made me get an appreciation of the, of the county and knowing the commitment that I, this is what I'm going to do full time. So I, I think that, you know, that, I think that God's prepared me for this. I don't want to be corny about it, but I look back at my experience and I think, you know what? There's times I woke up and said, you know, is this all there is to life? I just, I go to work, I come home, I walk the dog, I eat dinner with my wife and go to bed. Not that that's bad, Tracy. But, you know, is there more to life? And then when I looked at this run, I thought, you know what? Maybe I'm prepared. Maybe this is what God's prepared me to do. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Manny?
I'm a lifelong resident of Blair County. Never left here. I stuck with you through the good and bad. You stuck with me through the good and bad. My business has been here for 35 years. I could have packed up, moved out, went to another county a lot cheaper than Blair County, but I stuck with you. I did 45 years of community service at Station 50, all for free. Dedicated my life to this county. Why am I doing this? I'm asked it all the time. Why do you want to sit on a school board during all the COVID and what we're going through with the woke and everything else? For you, for you, for the people on the outside of these walls. That's why I'm doing it. Why am I running for commissioner? Exact same answer. When you get to a point, I can't explain it, when you're in business, you just get to a point where I'm ready to retire. You just want to give back to the community that made you who you are. And you, you people made me who I am. And I'll tell you what, I will fight for you every single day. Thank you.
I want to thank all of our candidates for their participation tonight. And they certainly deserve a round of applause just for. I also want to thank our, our moderators for doing such a great job and our timekeepers who got their share of dirty looks. Deserve them all. I also, again, want to thank the Blair County Democratic Committee and the Blair County Republican Committee as our sponsors. I, I'm not sure how often they work together, but they're working together on this. And, and they helped us to make sure that we could hold this event tonight. We encourage everybody, obviously, to vote on May 16th, not only for county commissioner, but for all elected officials in our county. On behalf of the Blair County Chamber of Commerce and its Public Policy Committee, I want to thank you again for attending and have a safe trip home.